The August 8th, 2024 Des Moines City Council meeting is now called to order. Councilmember Harris will now lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record show that all council members are present. Do we have any correspondence not previously received by the council?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, it's time for comments from the public. We ask that you keep your comments respectful and please understand anybody speaking or acting in a disruptive manner will be asked to leave the meeting. You'll have three minutes to speak, so please state your name and your city of residence. And the first person up that signed in is Kojo Ward. Is that you? Feel free to come on up to the podium right here, and they'll turn a little light on there, and just state your name and where you live.
Okay. My name is Kojo Ward and I live in Blueberry Lane.
Okay. And go ahead and tell us what your—do you have something written?
Um, no. I don't have anything written. So, so, uh, basically, I live in Blueberry Lane, and I just recently found out about, uh, that 194th Street, proposed, you know, closure road. And I was talking to J.C. early on during the week, and I voiced my concern. And basically, my concern is that, so, I live in Blueberry Lane, and with that closure, that means that we only have one entrance into Blueberry Lane. And I have a special needs child who is, you know, seventeen years old. With that, that means that in the morning, when the school bus gets into the neighborhood, the school bus will, uh, would not be able to turn around with that street being, uh, closed. It's, uh, another concern was that, uh, in the neighborhood, it's, it's, it's pretty much about, so, you know, young families. So, we all have a bunch of kids. And with my kid, and I know there's been several times in which I've called, you know, 911. And typically, when you call 911, the fire truck is the first to show up. Now, when 194th Street is blocked and it shows up, there's no way that they can turn around or back out. So, it's good—it's going to pose a serious, um, issue to us, in particular, those with special needs kids. So, I was talking to J.C. early on this week, and I found out about that, and it's—and I decided to show up at a city council to voice my concern that, that perhaps may—maybe that could be reviewed again and looked at, and our concerns, you know, taken into consideration. That's it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, is there anyone else who is attending tonight and expected to speak during public comment but did not realize they needed to sign in? All right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now it's time for committee chair reports, and we have a couple of reports tonight. We'll begin with the Finance Committee with Chair Mahoney.
Thanks, Mayor. The Finance Committee met last Thursday, August 1st, and we got a staffing update from Bonnie Wilkins on—she was trying to creatively find ways to save money with the—let me get this right—the what she's calling the Community Enrichment and—Enrichment and Services, which is better known as Parks Recreation and Senior Services. So, she was—the city manager had asked all staff to look at creative ways to find dollars to save as we have a bit of a budget crisis we'll be facing this fall. Anyway, she was creative in looking at it and estimates— and I say this conservatively—that she can—she thinks through some restructuring that they're going to do with people's shared services, move some of the offices around, and obviously, this is just speculative at this point, but she thought she could save $160,000 from—from what this year's budget was and cost. Then, um, our Director of Finance looked at the business license piece of it, and currently, if you're in city, you pay $75. There are some specific ones, but I'll give you the general, and if you're out of city, you pay $100 for the business license. The proposal is to consider raising the in-city to 100 and the out-of-city to 140, and that would net an additional 112K. These two things combined is approximately about $270,000, which, in all honesty, is about 10% of what we're going to need to either find in revenue or make cuts for—to balance the budget when we come into the October-November window. So, it'll be—it'll be an interesting challenge, particularly with the levy looking to fail. And that is—a there's—he gave us a general fund report, but he's going to give something very similar tonight, so I'm going to leave that alone and let Mr. Friend show us that. So, thank you.
Thank you. I also have a question. So, you were talking about the raising the business licensing fees, and how does that stack up to other cities around?
So, we were given a comparison of other cities and so forth, and quite honestly, in just the—I test, we were a little lower than—the others. Um, you know, obviously, you don't want to burden or impact your cities too much. We definitely—we talked about the BNO taxes, and we didn't want to touch those and so forth. But it would probably get us up more to par with—with other cities, but in general, with what we're facing, we definitely need to be creative and explore all opportunities.
Thank you. Uh, next up, the Environment Committee. I'll turn that over to Chair Harris.
Thank you. Um, so, we had a remarkably short meeting considering the weight of the material. We discussed the version five of the Des Moines Creek Basin Plan, which was created around 1996, 1997. Essentially, it's a—boy, how to summarize it—but it's a—it's a partnership with the Port of Seattle originally, King County, City of Sea-Tac, and Des Moines to address water quality, salmon, septic, trees, critters, everything in the area that you think of as the Des Moines Creek Trail. And it has—it's been—the—the plan has changed dramatically from the first version, because then the idea was building the Des Moines Creek Trail and developing this water retention facility and addressing water quality issues from the airport, the runoff and so on. Now, we are at V5, and we talk in terms of more maintenance, but due to the dramatic loss in tree cover and fish and all of this other stuff, the committee discussed, okay, how can we think about expanding the mission to do a little better? And it—this is simply a framework discussion. The details will be worked out by subject matter experts. It's a thirty-year project that will probably continue to go on forever, hopefully, because maintenance of this area will go on forever. And that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have the City Manager's Report, and tonight, we have a special guest. And, uh, well, we'll be bringing him up here in just a moment, and I just wanted to say, we—we haven't been able to have the privilege of having him give a report out of his position as King County Councilmember, Dave Up the Grove. And it's—it's a pleasure to have him here tonight to just tell us about what's going on at King County, and he's our representative here, District Five. And so, which covers Kent and Des Moines and a couple of other spots. So, come on up, Dave. Give us a report out.
Well, yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Dave Up the Grove, your elected King County Councilmember. And I ran into the mayor, I think, in—at the farmer's market or in town somewhere, and she said, "I hadn't seen you at a city council meeting." I said, "Well, I hadn't been invited," so she said, "Come on by." So, I appreciate the chance. I'm going to keep it brief and very general, and if there's questions, if you're—I don't know what your rules allow, happy to do that. And I'm also—I'm going to share a little bit of kind of about what the county does and what's the relationship with cities so that anyone watching understands those roles and responsibilities, because a lot of my friends say, "Don't know what a county council member is or what we do." And the way I describe what county government does, we are the local government in areas where there are no cities. So, around here, you think of White Center, Skyway, Vashon Island, you know, unincorporated areas. And the second thing we do is we do the things that don't make sense for cities to do on their own, and we call those regional services. And we provide—for example, it wouldn't make sense for Des Moines to have their own bus system, and Buryan to have their own bus system, and Normandy Park to have your own bus system, or for every small city to have to own their own water treatment plants. Some things make sense for us to do as a region, and we are a service provider doing those things. And the biggest functions by—by budget really are not sexy. Solid waste disposal and wastewater treatment, the two biggest functional areas. Public health is a function that got a lot of attention in recent years. Provide bus service through Metro. We provide criminal justice services for serious crimes. As you know, you—you handle your misdemeanors, your traffic tickets as city or group of cities. But we provide the courts, jails, prosecutors, and defenders for serious crimes. And we provide some limited human services funding around the region as well. We're governed, like other governments, with a legislative and executive and judicial branch. Our—the head of our executive branch is called the Executive, and the legislative branch is the King County Council. It's made up of nine county council members. We're elected by district. So, I represent District Five, which, as you mentioned, is Des Moines, Normandy Park, Sea-Tac, the south part of Tuck Willa, most of Kent, and a big chunk of Renton. And my job is to be the voice and the advocate for the people in those communities and to bring people's opinions and ideas to our work. And the job of the county council is much like the job of a city council. We approve the—the laws and the budgets for King County. One important thing to know that people often get confused on is we have no jurisdiction within cities. So, for example, if someone comes and says, "Dave, King County ought to pass a minimum wage," just for example, we can't pass a minimum wage that impacts people in the city of Des Moines. We're not their local government. We provide services, but we have no jurisdiction. And so, often, I'll get phone calls from people, like, for example, here in Des Moines, you know, "Why don't you pass a—a rule that says you can't build housing like this here? We don't like this housing in the city," or whatever it is. And I have to explain that King County doesn't make the rules for—within cities. And so, it's important for people to sort out which is the—the right government. We can be very helpful. We provide grants through human service programs that cities can apply for. We have a separate government. This gets really confusing. The King County Flood Control District, much like a school district or a fire district, it's a special purpose government. But state law says the county council members shall serve as the Board of Directors. So, the county council members are the governing body, but it is legally a separate government, and we provide grant funding from that government, too, for some work—good work that's been done here in King County. County council members serve four-year terms, elected by district, and it's staggered around the county, so a certain amount are elected each year, as—the—as does the county executive. People have asked about what happens if a council member leaves in the middle of their term, if they're hit by a car or something like that. If that were to happen, the county executive chooses three names to forward to the county council. We're a nonpartisan body. We're not Democrats or Republicans, although most—all of the people who are elected happen to personally identify with a party, but we're not elected by party. So, unlike a vacancy in the Senate where the political parties play a role, in the King County Council, if there's a vacancy, the county executive forwards three names to the county council, and they select from one of those three names. If they can't reach agreement—I think it's after sixty days, don't hold me to that—then the governor of the state appoints someone to that. Some of the issues coming up this year that are ahead of us on the agenda are the implementation of some new funding for arts and culture. You may remember voters approved new funding for arts and culture, and we had—we got a carve-out. So, 25% of that funding has to be spent outside of Seattle for the first time, and it's going to mean a significant shift with more dollars available in suburban cities here for arts and culture and heritage programs. And we're working through the details. We call it an implementation plan. That's a big project. The inter-local agreement for the Regional Homelessness Authority is up for renewal in front of the county council. That's—how do cities want to work with the county on that? I do admit, I think the best vote I ever took. We approved that Regional Homelessness Authority by an eight-to-one vote. And I like to say only dead fish swim with the stream, but it was a—I believe we need to work as a region, but I've always been critical of that structure. So, we have an opportunity now to revisit that between the cities and the counties about how can we best position ourselves on that issue. And like you, we have a budget we're dealing with, and, uh, we have some of the same stresses and challenges cities have with actually fewer revenue tools. But, um, we'll be working through that into the fall. So, those are three kind of the big items on our agenda. We're very—I—I like to think we're accessible. If someone were to Google "Dave Up the Grove," it takes you to a website with phone numbers and emails. We rely, like—probably like you do, on your talented staff a lot, and in my office, there's a woman named Diana Fibbs, and she's the Chief of Staff. They say to hire people smarter than you, and I did. She provides staff support on budget and flood control. There are three other employees. There's a woman named Zoe Mullendor, and Zoe provides staff support on—we kind of joke on things that don't involve people, so environmental regulatory issues, transit. And Shawnee Wilson provides support on human services and criminal justice issues. And if you ever contact my office, Elaine Rickards serves as office manager and helps with scheduling and—as—a legislative aide. And I'm—people are always welcome to contact me directly, but often, staff gets you answers quickly. So, I think it's important for cities and counties to have good working relationships and to keep lines of communication open. And if there's things I can do to, uh, you know, where I or my office or the county can get out of your way or do something helpful, uh, I'd like to be a partner with that. So, I appreciate you letting me come, uh, give a little overview and—and highlight a couple of issues coming up.
Thanks so much for being here, Dave. Really appreciate it. I know you're not tired at all. You haven't been doing anything, just twiddling your thumbs for the last few months, right? That's a joke. He's been—he's been working hard. So, any questions for the council member?
Chance to grill me.
Yeah. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz and then Councilmember Harris.
Yeah. Uh, Dave, I appreciate all the work that you do and—the corroboration that we've had on some—some city issues. I serve on the Sound Cities Association Public Interest—or Public Issues Committee. And so, we see a lot of things from King County. To what extent can you tell us that—that has an impact on you when we—when SCA has, you know, some feedback on something, for example, solid waste rates that are going to be increasing here in a little bit and the proposal? Can you talk about that process a little bit?
I think generally, we value that input. There's an old saying, though, that all politics is local. And don't tell S—the Sound Cities Association this, but I am first and foremost more interested in what you think and Normandy Park thinks and Kent thinks and Renton thinks than the association. I do value the association's input, but my responsibility is to represent you in this community. So, um, uh, I also think being clear and persistent to cut through—there's a lot of information and clutter. And so, when there are things that are—you feel strongly about, in addition to participating in the SCA process, I would also just literally pick up the phone and call me and say, "Dave, what's the deal with these rates? Why are you doing that?" And I will listen and—and try to understand and—and do the best I can to balance the interests.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Um, I—this is just somewhat rhetorical, but first of all, your constituent outreach is really good. And not—not all electeds are the same on this, and so, I just—I just want to, you know, some people just—so—some electeds are just more responsive, and your staff have always been great in that regard. I—I also think you were a little modest, the Flood Control District. King County is bigger than some states, and—and you guys cover a lot of ground, not to mention an airport. And it—it—it, yeah, the amount of ground you have to cover is, uh, you know, pretty huge. The—the arts, culture grants, the human services money, they're essential to us. And I just, yeah, a-a-anybody who's in your seat, you just have to cover so much territory. It's—it's just amazing. And, uh, thank you so much for—
Thank you. It's why I said all politics is like—I can barely keep my head above ground for South King County. So, when people start talking about Seattle, I'm like, "Oh, that's someone else's."
Well, well, just—so, yeah, all of that massage is basically just, hopefully, urban flooding grants for the city of Des Moines coming—
One of my goals has been to make sure that we're getting our fair shake down here.
Indeed.
Kind of a history of the south end being the forgotten stepchild sometimes, and I think over the last ten years, if you look at some trends in human services funding and some of these other programs, we're—we're doing a little better. And I think that's the goal, and so, one of the things I try to do is let you know when there are those opportunities. And your staff is pretty plugged in with county staff, but I—I try to amplify that through my office, too, so that you don't miss opportunities for city grant funding.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Oxiger.
It's not a question. I just wanted to thank you for all your efforts to help us with youth and sports activities and the grants, and also the—the—through the, um, arts programs and all of that, that bring some cultural enrichment that, and your efforts to make sure that a lot of that money's coming to the south end and is not being captured by our neighbors to the north. So, I want to thank you for all those efforts. It's greatly appreciated.
It's the fun part of the job. If I can't solve all the world's problems, sometimes you can fund a playground and feel—
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, just one more. You—you mentioned the arts funding that's coming back in front of the council, and 25% to be spent outside of Seattle. How—what's the rationale for 75% of that money being spent in Seattle and 25% spent elsewhere in King County? And how—how do we sort of fix that a little bit, because it doesn't seem to relate to population?
I probably wasn't clear. 75% is spent countywide, in and out of Seattle, using similar formulas to the way things have always been driven out. Separate from the countywide funding is a pot of money for just outside of Seattle. So, we would anticipate that we would get the traditional share we've always gotten from the rest plus this additional. So, it isn't 75-25. It's 75 for the whole county, 25 for just outside of Seattle. In both of those pots, including the 75% share, there also is some criteria that carves out and prioritizes lower-income diverse neighborhoods and—and census tracts. And South King County is filled with low-income diverse census tracts, including the city of Des Moines. So, we think those two changes, a 25% carve-out and some prioritization based on, um, need, is going to radically transform how those dollars went. You may remember the arts tax on the ballot years ago. So, we did the math in our office. It was a $60 million a year proposal. There were 60 to 70. I don't—you know, it was an estimate forecast. If every organization in South King County in my district had applied for the maximum amount they could have and all got approved, 369,000 would have come—of that 65 million is South King County. That was how skewed the arts tax was before. Now, we have—you know, it's about—I should know this, but it's a penny sales tax, so, uh, I don't know if that's about 80 million now, 75 million. Right off the bat, 25% of that goes to the suburbs, then 10% of the rest of it's prioritized in lower-income neighborhoods. And the agency's been slowly making progress at driving dollars out. The philosophy is we don't just double down on areas that have arts and cultural centers. It's that we want to develop arts and culture in areas where they are lacking, and that was the philosophy behind it, is we can have nice things here, too. People shouldn't have to go up to Seattle. I love the things in Seattle. We all do. We love the—you know, to go to the Museum of History and Industry or the aquarium. But we should develop and support those kinds of things here in our community, too, and that was the philosophy behind it.
Any other questions? Okay. Gosh, Dave, that was great, and—
It was good to see you.
Thank you. You, too, and I—I want to echo what Councilmember Harris said about your responsiveness. You know, I have a little story about Dave. When I was first running for office and I didn't know anybody, somebody gave me this long list of people that I needed to contact and get to know, and Dave was the busiest person on the list, and he's the only one that responded to my outreach, and, uh—
I think we had pizza at Athens.
Yes, yes, and I'll never forget it, you know? So, thank you so much. Greatly appreciated for you coming out tonight.
Thank you. That was kind of you to have me. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I guess before you leave, um, thank you, Dave. Our next item, and I know you're busy and you may have to go, but I'll just tell you that our next item, we're going to be talking about Midway Park Open Space Design Project.
Cool.
And so, at this Midway Park, since 2019, the city has applied for and received about $3 million from King County. That's through their King County Conservation. There was no match to that, which is great, and that allowed us to purchase a number of parcels that were closer to the road and demo the structures there so that we could expand the park. And then, recently, we received a grant from King County for $456,000 from the King County Parks Capital and Open Space Grant, and that has funded the design that we're going to hear about tonight. And so, that's where we're at. We're at the design point, and then we'll probably be applying for something for the construction. Heard the last of us. But we also have what we've mentioned and what our legislative advocate had mentioned, is we have some potential funding from Congressman Adam Smith to implement this design. So, we're looking at all sorts of options, and that was, you know, up in the air, and so, we'll certainly be talking with King County about funding options after we finish the design. So, I just want to mention that while Dave is still here, so appreciate that.
I think we're all excited about what the city's doing with Midway Park. There a few summers ago, there was a summer feeding program. You'd literally see the kids running out of the apartment buildings to come get the food, and to see the city develop that into such an incredible place as—I—I think it's a real legacy of the council here for—for that.
Great. Well, yeah, I just wanted to mention that while you're here. It's good timing. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Appreciate that. And now, I'll ask our Communications Director, Nicole Nordholm, to come up and introduce our Midway Park Open Space Design Project presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, City Manager Tim George kind of took—
City manager Tim George kind of took away everything I was about to introduce. But basically, earlier this year, you all, we signed on to a grant and a contract from the King Ca, King County Parks Capital and Open Space Grant, as he mentioned, for $456,000. And we brought on KPG consultants to work on this project. And from about March to now, we have done a ton of work and we're just thrilled with where we are with kind of the design and the next steps for getting Midway Park to where we want it to be. So with that, I will have Feng Wen, she's the project manager and senior landscape architect with KPG, and she's going to do a short presentation on where we are with design.
Thank you, Nicole. Hello, everyone. Yes, so this project is a really good field goal project, and it's a good piggyback off of what Dave has just mentioned about some of the improvements. But we're right now in 10% design, but I'd like to kind of walk you through the project a little bit more because we did a ton of outreach, reached a ton of people, and I, and I think that'd be a good opportunity to share. I'm going to grab. So if you all don't know, the site is kind of nestled within the Pacific Ridge neighborhood. It's in a really underserved area. And, but it's also adjacent to a lot of high-density homes. There's mobile homes in the north, and even one block north of that, there's a lot of apartments and condos. And down to the south and even to the left, there's a lot of apartments and assisted home and care centers. So there's a lot of different folks in the area, different backgrounds, different abilities, that finds this park as a haven for them, for recreation and just play, living, you know, just spending time after school. The issue with the park, I think, right now is where to find it. It's right off Pacific Highway, and you have to kind of go through a security route to get there. There's no wayfinding to the park off of 220th, which is a signalized intersection to the north on the west side of this street. There's an intersection there, but you don't know that there's a park just around the corner. And even down south on 220th, you know, you can walk along, along the street, but the street doesn't allow, on 28th, doesn't allow it to be a very pedestrian-friendly environment to walk in. So that's some of the issues I want to kind of speak to, just the context of the park. When we came upon this project, we really wanted to solidify the project goals with the city staff, making sure that we're on the same page, making sure that these goals are what we're looking forward for, the vision for the park, and really is to create a safer place. This park has had a bad reputation of just behaviors and just has been neglected over time. There's been some improvements, but yes, that's one of the biggest concerns still is to have a safer place for public use. I'm not going to read everything on here, you could probably read it yourself, but really it's just providing a place that's inclusive for all ages and abilities. It's a growing neighborhood, so allowing that, those programs, like the summer meals that, that was spoken about earlier, to happen, the programs that exist there, and also allow programs to also unfold itself with coordination with the Y program or anything else that happens as well. The Ray Saunders Group, they have a basketball or soccer camp there at summer. So we really kind of see that still being in the mix. So considering some existing programs, but also letting other programs fall in with features and amenities for the park. Again, overall creating an inviting space for the whole area and creating a place for play for everyone from the future and here on out. Again, speaking to the public engagement process, we did a ton. And our initial stakeholders was really the city and a lot of the community service officers. We spoke to Tanya and Corey, which were, you know, they were super helpful about giving us context of the park, safety issues, what use there is already. So really interviewing the staff and making sure that we understood just how the park functions from a day-to-day routine. And then our first touch point with the community was through the extravaganza event, and that was in March, and that was when we kickstarted the project and really rolled out, you know, what are people's initial impressions of it? We kind of went off of the gardening theme, the community garden that was, that was active before, was like a big proponent for the park. A lot of people kind of took hold of that. And since then, the champion, the person that really ran it, isn't no longer running it. But we kind of still use that as a thematic way to kind of thread with the community, how important it is to just have that community activation. So we did planting seeds with the kids at extravaganza and just really tried to kind of funnel in any kind of input we could from the parents that were just hanging out there as well. And that was in March. As I mentioned, the Ray Foundation had an event there, and this time it was in May, it was a little bit early summer camp for them. And we piggybacked on that and tabled there, provided three schematic design layouts that we then had a lot of feedback, and then did a follow-up event at the farmer's market, which, again, we did, we received so many feedback there that I think overall it kind of was enough for us to understand the pulse of what concept was preferred. The online surveys was kind of a hit or miss, but there wasn't a lot of virtual presence as far as community feedback, but because of the in-person outreach that we had, we felt like we had enough information. Other outreach things that we also did was just had a virtual presence through the city's website and then Facebook and also the Warland blog. We hung 100 door hangers around the, the city of the neighborhood, and still we had a low count for surveys. So the door hangers helped for those that may not have that internet kind of platform, but I think overall, we found that the in-person was the outstanding outreach that we got and needed from the community. As mentioned earlier, since the in-person was so successful, we had about 359 feedback from everyone. There was about 59 feedback from the Ray Foundation event, and then the remaining 480 was actually from the farmer's market, which was great because we got to really interact with the whole community of Des Moines and people beyond that came to the farmer's market and that didn't know about the park. And so that became more of an education component to telling people. And I recognize some faces in the crowd here, folks that actually I talked to at the farmer's market, so it's great. Really kind of prioritized different elements of the park, got feedback on that as well as the design layout and then the design theme, which I'll go into next. Again, I won't go over the online survey, but came down to about 17 feedback on the schematic layout there. And we provided surveys in both Spanish and English, trying to make sure it was, you know, as inclusive as possible, you know, being mindful, and then also provided translation if needed, which wasn't actually needed since we didn't get that much feedback. Some of the park improvements included prefabricated restroom, that was a high need, shelters, dog park, facility area, open lawn, that was a big requirement as far as the King County Open Space Grant to have that. Something, and that also piggybacks with the movie screen, which could be programmed in as well. An item that we threw in there that wasn't actually, I think, kind of tipped the scale on desirability was a pickleball court. We know that there isn't an outdoor pickleball court in Des Moines, so this would be the first park in the city to have one, and it would bring up, I think it would bring in a lot of people from all backgrounds, and they just didn't have use throughout the day and evenings. So that's something that we thought could really highly activate the park. I include, I mean, we included that in the design layouts that we provided. Play structure for older kids, there's already an existing younger kids' play structure there, so we added a, a older kids' play structure to try to pull in that demographic. There's a lot of high schoolers that hang out in the park and they have nothing to do. And they have nothing to challenge them. They're just sitting around, hanging out. So, you know, we thought maybe it's another way to kind of pull older kids, even myself as an adult, love playing on larger, you know, play structures if I can. There's a great topography on the site, so a hill scramble was something we thought that we can incorporate to kind of play with the topography a little bit, as well as having a loop trail that really circuits around the park, connects to the existing area of the park, fitness circuit, zip line, and hardscape areas for gathering spaces. From the feedback that we got, the overwhelming results was for a larger play structure, 85 votes, dog park, accessibles, trails kind of trickled behind, and the community garden was still up there even though there wasn't any, there isn't any active use of it on the park necessarily, but again, educating to the public that this community garden would be actually a formalized garden space where it'd be fenced off and you'd have plots where you'd sign up, there'd be someone that actually would take ownership and champion it. And I think that, that really enticed the public to think, okay, well, I can be a part of this. And if it's well-run and well-organized and, and well-protected, of course, with a fence, then it could be something that's potential for the park. Again, up, up there is also a zip line and restroom. Zip line's great because of the topography change. That was, again, that kind of appealed to the older kids. The two themes that we looked at was the lookout, and that was more of a Pacific Northwest-inspired look-and-feel theme. So this is an overlay of what's going to be on the park improvements. The second theme was midway mosaic. We noticed that there's some mosaics at the existing Ray Foundation basketball hub area, so we thought, hey, why not kind of integrate that into the newer park as well? In the end, I think it was kind of close, but the lookout kind of won out a little bit more. Honestly, we may or may not be preserving some of the younger kids' play structure, and we, it might just be a mix. So just putting it out there. But the lookout was an overwhelming vote, which I think would then kind of be explored for the play structure since that's a number-one improvement. So with the three layouts that I'm going to go through, I'm just kind of stepping through really quickly and maybe, it's plan view, as you can see, north is up, still the same orientation as the context map that was presented earlier. In this scheme, the existing play structure and swing set on the upper northeast corner remains, as well as, I mean, in all three schemes, the number seven sport court remains. So there's, keep that in mind. Everything to the left, all those parcels that was acquired, that's all new. So that's all new park improvements right there. So in this scheme, we did integrate the pickleball court right next to the sport court, thinking that that'd be a combined, but the existing play structure remains. Open lawn is still a part of all three. Alternative B here, you'll see that the open lawn kind of moves to the south a little bit, the community garden moves up to the northwest corner, and there's a dog park that runs up to the, to the east side of the park site. Parking configurations changed a little bit. We heard from the city staff members that parking is well-desired within the park just because there's a lot of abandoned vehicles along the stretch of the road. So having parking that commutes the facilities highly desirable. And then lastly, alternative C, it's a massaging of both, but it's really kind of gives you the best of both worlds. The pickleball court, the community garden, the zip line, and the restroom facilities, it's all in there in a different configuration, but there's also a little bit more parking in this one. And then again, we found from the feedback that alternative C was the most preferred. There's some sampling comments from the public that we heard. They really liked all three, the dog park, pickleball court, rain gardens, like a combination of everything, including the community garden. And they really liked how the, the fitness area was also included in the option C version. So with that, this is what we moved forward with in 10%. We're working on that right now. We'll be providing that deliverable to the city early next week. And in that, this deliverable would also be including geotechnical report and analysis. So we're working on it right now, test pitting, making sure some areas are properly fitted for infiltration for stormwater and for just some of the structural needs for the shelter and the restroom. We're also having a trip generation parking study. We looked at different parking studies, so you can see actually from, let me go back, from this layout, the parking is a little more abundant here, but we reduced it down to the previous parking layout, more of an angle wind parking, simply because we want to preserve a little more green space. So that was a discussion we had. And also for the imperviousness for stormwater facilities, trying to reduce that, that pressure on that system and just maintenance in general. And then we'll also be providing an illumination analysis report. Again, safety was a big concern, and so we're making sure that there's lighting that's lit from dusk till dawn, but in the evening, it kind of goes to a really dim level, even in the sport court area. We just don't want to attract any nighttime users, but we also don't want to encourage anything else that happens beyond that. And then lastly, a stormwater memo and cost estimate. So our next step is to get to 60%, and that will be towards the end of August. That will get going on that. And if you have any questions, you can please defer it to Nicole Nordholm, she'll take care of them, as she told me. So I appreciate everyone's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, questions? I'll start with Councilmember Nutting and then Councilmember Mahoney.
I don't, I don't have any questions. I just have a few comments that I think the design C with incorporating everything, the project that I'm on right now is in a neighborhood that's very underserved, and Midway Park has always been one of my, near and dear to my heart parks. And the community garden is, in, in the neighborhood that I'm working in right now, is, is amazing. I have never been able, between the raised beds and the, and the ground-level beds, that has been taken care of really well, and the fruits and vegetables that are being grown for this underserved neighborhood, would do well up in that neighborhood as well. And I, I think the residents of that neighborhood would take very much care of that. And, and turning that park into a much more community park and larger area is, is just amazing. And so I'm very excited to see what's to come with that park. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Mahoney.
So I, I, obviously through this process, I've seen you at the farmer's market, and I've seen you at Midway, and always been a big advocate for procuring the additional property. So this is fantastic. A quick question, parking has always been a challenge there, and even with a small lot, it will be, has there been any discussion possibly using the PSE land just east of that as maybe making some kind of agreement? Because it seems like wasted land, it's an open space, grassy and so forth, and it's never been used. And I, my thoughts were even as simple as gravel and something like that in some kind of partnership might solve the parking problem without having to take away from the park.
Yeah, so I do know, and I can get back to you with more details, but I know we do have an agreement with them because maybe the end of last year, they had contacted parks and there is, we have something in place with them, but I don't believe we've reached out about parking and whatnot for this. So that's a good thought.
It just seemed that possibly that could be an alternate to that, that might be a less expensive option and serve more people when the park's being used, is all. Just, but I think, I can't, the, the work that's been done here has been excellent, and, and I do think it served the surveys and the needs of the community there.
Any other questions? Councilmember Harris.
So, thank you. This is, you know, a little bit off the, the presentation, but does the city have any long-term thinking in terms of access to the, because the, the opening of the presentation, I identified, I think, what is the real issue is that people don't know where it is, it's difficult to get to. And, yeah, is there like a long-term kind of a thing to, you know, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I just, at some point, you know, in other words, no matter how wonderful this is, there has to be easier access.
Yeah, and so we have, I mean, just with the consultants, as well as, we have, every other week, we have check-in meetings, and we've definitely brought in, you know, the public works team, our maintenance, and so we have kind of a cross-city staff involvement with next steps for this. So we do, I mean, it is in the plans and whether it's.
Yeah, no, no, no. I'm, I'm just talking five, 10 years.
Yeah.
It might take 10 years to develop right away and all that stuff, but that's the big question that I get all the time, is like, where is this? And then they get there and they go, it's great. Okay, so this is the other thing where I'm gonna have to be that guy. But we had this expression in my job called Oyster's Rockefeller, which people have, are probably too young to remember, but Oyster's Rockefeller is an oyster with like 31 different toppings on it. And what you really want is just the well-made oyster. And I look at this and it is, it, it looks like just a ton of really lovely stuff, but my personal preference would be simplicity. It just, but I had the same thing, thing regarding the Marina Steps. It, it, it all, each, I can't grasp about any of the elements, but as I think about it in terms of maintenance, in terms of just maybe three really super cool features would be the better thing. But I don't mean that as any disparagement of, it's just, I like parks that have three simple things rather than 10. And I also, I'm, I have, should I have any concerns about having a dog park? I mean, is that, are there like, could you get some provides, me or the council with, like a link to, I'm sure there are certain standards for dog parks and that kind of thing. Is it, is it weird for me to be concerned about that? Just in terms of.
I think the benefit of having a, like a delineated bark, dog park area, especially for this area, and it's right next to the PSE station on top of it, is a liability of bringing your dogs and then having them be within certain areas of the park that they might not need to be in. So even people that were responding to us at the Ray Foundation event, they didn't ever thought about dog park, and they don't even have a dog, but they're like, this is kind of nice because, you know. So even people that were responding to us at the Ray Foundation event, they didn't ever thought about dog park, and they don't even have a dog, but they're like, this is kinda nice, cuz, you know, they have their area, we have ours, and they're actually in the quieter area of the park where where it's a little bit kinda tucked away and the trees are a little bit kind of sheltering that noise a little bit. But it's a delineated space that everyone can utilize as well. So there's a more passive space. And again, I mean, 10% is where we dream, and we really put in everything, and then we start to think about it, talk it through with the city, making sure maintenance, is this is gonna work? Is this frontage improvement connection is gonna work? And we'll whittle it down. So I think the next time you see me, it's gonna be a little bit different, a little massage, but there are standards to everything that we typically do. In dog park, there's a little bit of nuances, but there's also a safety factor on on top of it.
Okay, no, I I would just like to, like, you know, how big is a typical dog park and how does it interface with human type stuff, drainage, you know, all that jazz? Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you so much for the information and the presentation today. I wanted to ask a little bit about your philosophy around universal design and accessibility. As you talked about how diverse the neighborhood is, and and I'm thinking in terms of not only age, but ability level. And so if you could tell us a little bit more, oop, I guess it's not there, on the on the Design C, how you might address issues of access, the grade, making sure that it's something that folks from all ability levels can enjoy.
Sure. So this is great that it's a pointer here. So from accessibility perspective, we actually, since we're in design right now, we have consolidated the ramp and the stairs over here together. So folks from this end and this end can equally meet on the lower end of the site where it's kind of graded. Around the play area, we combine this a little bit more, and there is actually a sidewalk that kinda sneaks up through here that is an accessible edge. So a lot of, the fun part of a park really is the topography change. But that's a challenge, you know, for some people with mobility needs. But also the fun part is to kind of push those needs, right, a little bit. And say, you know, you know, a younger sibling has a wheelchair, an older sibling doesn't need it, but once more challenge to it. We designed the park currently right now to have both, that they can kinda co-mingle in the same space. So the concept of co-mingling, that inclusiveness of everyone from all abilities is important, and that's threaded throughout all ends of the park. So this looparound path that you see here, we kinda massaged a little bit more, and it it kinda kinda goes like this. This is the this squiggly path here has a more of a steeper grade, and that's more of the challenging path. If you really wanna get some elevation and quick steep slopes, that's where you go. So there's a, there's a piece for everyone is what we're we're designing. We're not designing, so it's defensive, it's partly defensive design, you know, there's cameras in three areas of the park, but it's also safe design and inclusive design as well.
Any questions? Okay, a couple. Could you clarify what a rain garden is?
A rain garden is essentially a bioinfiltration trench. If I had to kinda put it in engineering terms, it's a fire retention swale. So it's a dip in the edge of a road that really manages stormwater, any water on site. And how you, it's really, they call it rain because you're capturing any water that runs on site, which is pretty much just rain, right? And you can do it beautifully in in different ways. You can create weirs, to create, you know, different levels of channels coming through. And the plants in it usually, the plants are strategically chosen to clean the water. So it's again, slowing down the water and creating a bed for it to sit in, but also making it look good at the same time. So it's not just a ditch on the side of the road.
So will it have drain, so will it go into drainage like a culvert, or will it sit like a like a stormwater pond?
So we have talked with the stormwater manager with City of Des Moines, and he recommended a conveyance system that is just like a backup, you know. But for most of the site, it actually drains pretty well in this area. We'll have something around the pickleball court, and currently, some of the parking is gonna drain into a fire retention rain garden swell. Here, there's a little bit of outfall here, as well as to the south if necessary.
Okay, good. That was, that was helpful. One, I'm I'm curious about that there were no votes for a splash park. And the reason I was curious about that is because when we did a park survey, that was one of the most commonly requested when we did our master plan, our Parks Master Plan. So I was just so curious that there wasn't, maybe it wasn't an off offered for a dot, to put a dot on that. I'm not sure. Could you?
Well, with the splash pad, and we've learned through a lot of our other park projects, is there's a lot of maintenance behind it. And sometimes it kinda stops there where the the management of that isn't, I guess, isn't desirable. It takes a lot of water, for one, and then also having to make sure that you have a recirculating system, if anything. And then you have to have someone that comes in to kinda look at it every week. So it has a high demand for maintenance, and that's a responsibility for anyone that would wanna put it. But I I think for us, when we looked at it, we thought, well, you can even incorporate misters, something to, you know, cuz with climate change, it's not gonna get any better here. You know, just to reduce that heat island effect and create a more greener feeling space, perhaps misters is a good accommodation. That's something we kinda toyed around a little bit, and that can be tied right into your water system easily without the maintenance of a splash pad. That wasn't a part of the King, the King County Open Space Grants, like as far as the amenities. But in looking at the existing site, if we did do it, and it's decided, one of the requirements, I'm jumping back and forth a little bit, sorry, is because there's impervious area, when you do a splash pad, there's a lot of pavement as well, and you're you're only allowed 10% of pavement area within this part of the acquired parcels. Now, if the splash pad was to be on this side, that would be taking the space of, say, the pickleball court, you know, which requires less maintenance than a splash pad. So we're, we're looking at those, you know, those options. But in looking at it, I think the maintenance and the conversation we had with staff was that it probably wasn't something that they would desire. And you'd have a really neat, you need a really big building to kind of hold all the equipment and the pump system and everything else that comes with it.
Okay.
That would take up a lot of space, too.
Good answer. Councilmember Harris. And then Councilmember Nutting.
Yeah, this may be the stupidest question since stupid, but are the red things trees?
Oh, they're accent trees, so I think if you're, you know.
What are, I mean, how are they, are they, are they like, you know, deciduous versus coniferous or whatever the word is?
They may be. Well, this plan is so schematic and loose, we'll dial that in a little bit more. But yeah, we're really mindful of the tree list that that's approved by the city. And we have, we're, we have an arborist on site that's looking at all the trees that's currently there, which ones viable or not. And whatever we decide to propose in the final design will be compatible with what's currently in the standards.
Okay, I just, cuz I'm, I'm like, I'm trying to remember, you know, just which of these are existing trees and which are new and.
All of, all of the green, evergreens here are existing.
Okay.
That's what we're kinda jumping around. That's, in each concept, you see a lot of it has, it's got a kinda sinuous motion throughout the park, and that's, the trees really allow that to happen, that meandering, the natural meandering happen.
Yeah, I agree. Thanks.
Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. Pardon me. So the, talk about a rain garden and maintenance and the pavement, brought this question on. So how much of this surface is going to have to be impervious pavement or impervious concrete?
This part of the project here is, oh, sorry, right here, that's all going to be asphalt. All the pathways you see are going to be concrete. We could look into pervious concrete as a way to kinda get infiltration into the site. But that's still, you know, again, it's a maintenance issue, so it may clog, you need a vac truck, and then you have to make sure all the sidewalks are vehicle loaded. Yeah, it's just, the list runs on. So right now, as of now, we're doing it as concrete for 10%.
Gotcha. So there, there's no pervious pavement or concrete required on the job?
There is, there's no impervious required, but there is a number percentage. So you're only allowed 10% impervious area.
Okay, okay, perfect. Cuz I'm, that was my point, that the pervious pavement and concrete is such an upkeep. You have to, like you said, the vac truck, and it's insane. But, okay, thank you.
Everybody good? All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. It's exciting that this is gonna be appearing, oh, estimated completion date.
We need funding.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
TBD.
So this, the grant that we're working with right now, we have until November of 2025. But as far as for construction and next steps, there's a few grant cycles that open early next year. So we're kind of in process with all that, but this piece will be done probably before November of 2025, like probably end of this year.
And then we'll submit for grants and then wait a year and then wait for procurement and then, yeah.
Stay tuned, but it's happening.
Okay, very exciting. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. So yeah, we're, this is the 10% design piece, so we're still working through the design. I just wanna point this out, though. So this, you know, great, you know, once this is finished, you know, the city will have a great new park. But when we're talking about maintenance piece, you know, what this new park, bringing this online, having new facilities, having restrooms, having security issues. I mean, these are all things that now require staff and, you know, potentially more staff. So, you know, awesome park, really cool, that will also increase our budget. So that's just something that when you think about, when people say, oh, you need to live within your means, when you create new public amenities, you really kind of increase your means, right? So that's gonna increase our budget just by creating a great public space. So just something to think about, that we've already started these discussions with the Marina Steps, with Midway Park, just looking at as we forecast out about what the city's gonna need, because we're not gonna be able to 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 maintain this, maintain other parks that we open with our existing staffing levels. So we always have to look at at what the impacts are. So just something to keep in mind. But that's gonna conclude this item. And at this point, I'd like to ask our city engineer, Tommy Owen, to come up to discuss this inter-agency agreement, which is also on the consent calendar tonight. And if I could just say before Tommy starts, we have representatives from WashDOT here. If you have questions about the consent calendar item, if we could ask them during this presentation, because they may not be present when we move forward to the consent item. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council, Tommy Owen, City Engineer. So this evening, I will be giving a brief presentation, just a couple of slides on just the highlights of the inter-agency agreement between WashDOT and the city, before I turn it over to some of the WashDOT staff that has graciously joined us this evening. So the inter-agency agreement, GCB 3807, that will be on the consent agenda later this evening. So the city has been in discussions with WashDOT over the historic 509 right-of-way for 15-plus years. It's, it's been a discussion point between the two entities for as long as I can remember, just looking at different options for that area. A few years ago, the city did acquire a permanent easement for the Barnes Creek Trail within the historic 509 right-of-way. And you can, it's a little tough to see in that graphic there, but it is kinda in the light blue area through that corridor. So the SR 509 completion project, stage two, proposes to utilize the historic right-of-way as a mitigation site for their project. And the WashDOT staff will discuss more about that in their presentation. Also, the 509 project will also impact South 194th Street within the city. So these are kind of the two main areas of impact, both the historic 509 right-of-way and 194th Street. So the mitigation within the Barnes Creek Trail area will include removing invasive plants, enhancing native plants, preserving forest character, removing hazard trees, and utilizing crime prevention through environmental design principles. The existing Barnes Creek Trail, it'll be utilized for construction access by WashDOT's contractor, which will provide for a stabilized path through construction, and then beyond that, through a 10-year landscape maintenance and establishment period. So what's important to note here is there is no cost to the city for this agreement. The site may be considered for a future conveyance to the city, but in the end, the city ends up with a preserving a nature trail through this area. So that kinda concludes my portion of the presentation, and I'll turn it over to the WashDOT staff as well.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. Do I advance with this? Yes. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief overview of the Puget Sound Gateway Program and the SR 509 completion project. My name is Daniel Babuca. I am the deputy program administrator for the Gateway Project. And with me is Andre Chappell, who is our 509 project construction manager. We've been asked to keep our presentation brief, so we'll provide a brief program overview, followed by a discussion about the 509 project specifically by Andre. And then we'll conclude with some discussion about our community engagement. We may not hit all the topics you might have interest today. We're more than happy to come back and provide more detailed briefings, if that is something that council or mayor would like. The Gateway Program completes two critical missing links in the state highway system. That is the SR 509 project here in King County, and then also the SR 167 completion project in Pierce County. Together, these two projects make up the program, and these projects build connections to the port of Tacoma and Seattle. They connect to the major distribution centers in the region. They improve mobility and reliability in the region, and then also help to enhance the state's economic vitality and competitiveness within the freight component. I'll just touch on the funding that's associated with our program. The state legislature funded the program in 2015, and we've been working to develop the project and now are into construction with the 509 project specifically. The total program funding is 2.69 billion. The largest component of that is through state funding, so that is about 2.32 billion of state funding, which also includes some discretionary federal funds that is allocated by the state. The other major component here is a local contribution, and so that was required by the state legislature at the funding of the program. And so to date, we've been able to raise about 136 million in local contributions with various projects that are within the two corridor areas. We've also been successful in leveraging federal funds. To date, we've secured a federal infra grant for 73.7 million dollars. And then the other component here required by the legislature was to generate funding for the program through tolls. So both the 167 completion project and the 509 project, once completed for the new segments, will be toll corridors. And so that was required to generate about 180 million dollars of funding. And so we've been working on advancing the traffic and revenue studies, the level three studies that would support the toll rate setting. And we'll be coordinating with the Washington State Transportation Commission as they gear up to engage in that toll rate setting starting next year. And that will include a public engagement and community input process as well. With that, I will turn it over to Andre to provide a presentation on 509.
Hello, everyone. So let's talk about 509 completion project. The vicinity map you see here kind of shows all the different stages, different contracts that we have to deliver. Stage 1A, very briefly, it was a small scope, mostly SR 99 bridge that's now open to traffic. It was delivered by Sound Transit Q as part of their ferryway link extension project through contraction agreement. It's probably difficult to see, but we've also funded 1.8 mile segment of Lickstown Trail, Segment C, from 200th Street all the way to 188. And it's also has been constructed and open for use. Hopefully, some of you have used it already. And then primarily two contracts administered by WashDOT at stage 1B. It's well underway. And you can kind of see timeline below the vicinity map here. Quite a few improvements along I-5, including new tunnel under I-5, improved I-5 SR 516 interchange, new bridge at 216, much wider, has bike lanes and sidewalks on both sides. We're also happy to say it's been open. We're also happy to say it's been open to traffic in both directions for a couple of months now, faster than original MOU envisioned. You know, it was 12 months allowed in MOU. Atkinson only spent six months, so it's good. There's some improvements in Madrona neighborhood, because 509, you know, cut enough, 208. I want to also point out, there's a toll point between SR99 and I-5. Now will be the only one toll point for the entire 509. There is no toll point in Stage 2. And, you know, half diamond interchange at 20, 24th Avenue. That's going to be a connection to and from 509. If you happen to drive on it last couple of days, you probably notice it's been paved. So it, it, it looks like a real road. And so that, that's kind of a quick overview of a Stage 1B contract. Like I said, we are planning to open that to traffic second half of next year. But, but, you know, wait, there's more, Stage 2 contract. So we issued notice to proceed to our contractor, also Atkinson, on February 15th of this year. And now we are going through final design. It has an auxiliary lane on I-5. You see that kind of in red color between SR516 and 272nd. And also basically, just building remaining two miles of SR509 expressway between 24th Avenue and 188, four-lane highway, brand-new full interchange on 188. Now, some people joke that's the biggest kind of a, you know, dead end i- in the area. We also have some improvements at 160th Street, you know, improving those ramp terminals, building roundabouts, and also two noise walls. Let me shift to next slide and provide you with some photographs and a brief status update for our Stage 1B contract. What you see here is basically a first mile of expressway. Photograph on the left, you're looking north, and you kind of see on the background, you know, 24th Avenue, which is kind of a termination point for Stage 1B contract, SR99, Sound Transit Light Rail guideway. More on the, on the front here, so the Light Rail guideway on the left side. Down below, kind of in the trench, that's our southbound 509 coming up towards I-5. And up on the right side, that's the northbound 509. And the flyover you see on the right side, and right side, you're looking south, that's the connection from northbound I-5 to northbound 509. On the background, you see a brand-new 216th Street bridge. Now, we're at I-5 SR516 interchange. You see a tunnel, a twin-barrel tunnel construction under I-5. Since this photograph was taken, we, we, by now, backfill this section, place traffic on it, and now working on a Phase 4, which is the last phase of tunnel construction, which provides basically improvement to all the freight movement going from the port down to Kent Valley, to all those warehouses and distribution centers. And picture on the right kind of shows the future, you know, 216th Street Bridge. Like I mentioned before, sidewalks, bike lanes on both sides, and, and three lanes of traffic. And that's just a quick time lapse of how we built that tunnel. Took a bit longer than this. But, anyway, I'm going to shift to a Stage 2 now, very, very briefly. Photograph on the right from termination point of a Stage 1B, and, and two miles of a brand-new highway. Going to build five new bridges. And there's, there's a blow-up of one area that could be of an interest to you, 192nd, 194th, Des Moines Memorial Drive area. Also, lower left shows that Barnes Creek mitigation site. And Tommy described all the improvements we're going to be making and, and, you know, doing landscape upkeep for, you know, 10 years, five years by contractor, five years by WashDOT. And like I said, so we've, we've been going through final design and gearing up towards next year construction season. And Daniel is going to tell you about community engagement to inform people about upcoming construction.
Thanks, Andre. As Andre mentioned, we continue our efforts to engage the public during construction. So on September 4th, we'll be launching a new online open house, specifically for the SR509 Stage 2 construction phase. We also have quite a bit of material on our website. So right now, we have an online interactive map that folks can navigate some of those images and renderings from, from that interactive map. So you can go and pick different areas along the corridor and see what types of improvements are planned in our, in some cases now, in construction. We have quite a bit of robust participation in fairs and festivals on both of our corridor projects. I think we had some attendance here in the city of Des Moines from some electeds as well. So that's something that we are always committed to year after year. And we take a lot of our project information updates to the public and try to engage with them in these types of venues, as well as community organizations. I think we've had a couple of briefings with a few community organizations within the city of Des Moines, and then also continuing to engage with the Highline School District just to make sure that they're aware of what's coming up in terms of construction impacts and make sure that we're coordinating in those regards as well. And I mentioned, you know, providing area-specific construction outreach. We do a lot of postcards, flyerings, and door-to-door knocks with the surrounding communities about upcoming construction activities. And I'll just mention again, right, we do multiple briefings with municipalities and other community groups. So we're always open and willing to come and speak about the projects, provide information as requested. And, and again, if we, if, if you desire a more in-depth, detailed presentation or briefing, we'd be happy to come back and provide that as well. And with that, that concludes our presentation. Thank you again for the ability to provide an update to you, and we'll open it up to any questions.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I think you heard some of the public comment earlier about the closure of 194th and the concerns of the neighborhood around there. Can you tell us a little bit about what the process has been through? What's the consideration with closing off the street? And is there room for larger vehicles like fire trucks and, and school buses to turn around?
I'll provide a little bit about history and context. As we mentioned, right, the, the project was funded in 2015. And since then, we've been working with multiple stakeholders and project partners on development of alternatives to fit within that funding that was authorized. So we've spent quite a bit of time in 2015 through 2018 working with our executive and steering committees to define, write the footprint, the elements, the configurations. And so through that process, we were able to narrow it down to essentially the options that is now in construction. Once we narrowed it down to the preferred alignment, the types of connections and amenities at both at I-5 and, and 188th, we then had a, we went through a NEPA reevaluation process in 2013 to document and analyze that now preferred alternative moving forward. And so there was a lot of interaction with various cities along the corridors to make sure that we're eliciting input and, and feedback on that. And then, as you might imagine, you know, NEPA Environmental Process also has a pretty robust public engagement and information process. So again, we were out taking that information about the alternatives and its effects to the various communities. We held open houses with that to elicit feedback. And then from there, we were able to get approval from FHWA to move forward with the current design and plan that's in place. I'll let Andre speak to more the recent coordination with the city and city staff around the specifics.
All right, so I'm going to be speaking for my counterpart in design and contract procurement. So when they were working on conceptual plans and, and type of closures and amenities in a conceptual sense. So they've been talking to, you know, Highline School District. They've been working with city staff to, to come up with conceptual plans. I also mentioned that we're now in the final design, so we're still doing some tweaks. And that particular concern that we've heard today, so I'll be more than happy to take that. And maybe if I can have a little bit more information as far as like the origin and destination addresses, the type of bus and vehicles, so we can run some out-of-turns and see how it fits an existing route and, and see what, what, what are the options, right? So we're going to be definitely taking that information home and going to be working with our design builder and their engineering firm to assess the impacts and see what are the options.
If I could just add something real quick, because I'm looking at the plans here. So I, I, I heard the gentleman speak, and he indicated he thought there'd only be one entrance and one exit to Blueberry Lane. So we're looking at, at, in our packet, it's Exhibit A to this agreement. It actually shows the portion of 194th that is being closed is just the section
To the east.
To the east. So 194th will remain open from Blue, if you're leaving Blueberry Lane to the north, you can still turn left onto 194th. So, and then actually, there's, there's three entrances and exits to Blueberry Lane that will remain.
The routing will be slightly different, but there are more than one option.
Yeah, and so that, you know, I mean, I know, working with school districts, you know, if roads close, they'll look at the map and they'll figure out a new route, right? I don't think that they'll be, you know, pulling an Austin Powers in the neighborhood trying to turn around. I mean, they can come in one way, pick up, go out the other. And the same with fire. I mean, they'll update their maps, they'll figure out the fastest way to get to where they need to go, and they'll, and they'll make it work. So I don't think you'll be needing to turn around in that neighborhood. There are three entrances and three exits that will remain.
Yeah, just one, just asking, has there been any community engagement in Blueberry Hill, particularly in that area of Blueberry Lane, I'm sorry? I always think of the, so.
I believe during NEPA reeval, basically by NEPA, we are required to, to send out mailers to the people within a certain radius, that number escapes me, of, of the project. And we also had online open houses, it was still, when we had gone through COVID. So it was online open house and, and where people had an opportunity to see that 94th will be cut off and, and provide public comments for it, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
So I guess, a couple of things. Is the Lake to Sound Trail Segment C considered complete? Or is there still, you know, touch-up?
We'll be speaking a little bit probably for King County, so hopefully it's not going to be out of turn. My recollection that original Segment C was 2.2 miles, but WashDOT was only responsible to fund 1.8 mile, that ends right at the 8th and, and 188th. And there's a 0.4-mile segment in city of Buhrin that was going to be funded by King County. I believe they ran into some challenges with maybe real estate or design or something along those lines. So they, it was basically split into two segments. That 0.4-mile segment, I believe, is still in design.
Yeah, fair, fair point. So I, I only care about Des Moines.
Okay.
But basically, Des Moines Memorial Drive, that, that segment, 200th, Des Moines Memorial Drive whipping around 8th, that's considered basically complete?
Yes, physical completion has been issued a few months ago.
Okay, there's no more tweaking, you know?
Nope. I, I walked it on Wednesday, that, that segment from 188th to Des Moines Memorial Drive looks good.
Yeah, okay, good. Just, just double-checking. And, you know, regarding the gentleman who is here, I think just his concern, I, I don't want to be too cavalier about it, even if they, you know, the thing can make a left and so forth. Just, you know, a fire engine is a, is a big thing, and I just want to make sure that it's, and a full-size, a bluebird is a big thing. And I just want to make sure that it's something that's a practical deal and just, you know, whatever you can do, I'm, I'm not trying.
I'll go back and double-check with our final designer.
Okay, groovy. So, and finally, I just have to, I'm just channeling the public. Despite the wonderful regard with which I hold WashDOT and all your fine work, the public outrage on Stage 2 has been just like, I'm trying to think of a word that is the opposite of good, that doesn't sound disparaging. It's been terrible. Yeah, that's the word I was looking for. The public has absolutely no idea what Stage 2 will mean for them. I'm talking about along 200th, I mean, Blueberry Lane. It, it's just, and, and you have had renderings for a very long time. You've been super cool about Stage 1 and providing flyovers and all of that. But the, the, the public really does not, I mean, they see, they see earth being moved along 24th, and they haven't, you know, haven't put it together. They see earth being moved along 200th and, you know, just the whole surplus property being, you know, removed. And the, Des Moines Memorial Drive, it swoops around through this forested Port of Seattle property, WashDOT surplus. And they see all of that stuff, but they haven't put it together that it's a four-lane highway. And you've had renderings for a long time, and there should have been something like that like two years ago. And I'm sorry, I'm not yelling at the U, I'm, I'm talking to the empire. You, you, you could have had just basic overview drawings of what this would mean for the residents here.
I, I believe with that, we've been doing the summer outreach and festivals for, I think, since 2019 or 18. And we were going to, you know, Buhrin and Des Moines and Sea-Tac every, every summer. And the maps we're sharing, the folios, did have the same vicinity map I shared today. They were showing Stage 1B and Stage 2. So maybe people are paying more attention to the, the toll section.
I, I, I challenge you to show me an image from your Flickr site any, that in any way demonstrates what that highway is going to look like as it transitions from 188th and swoops around behind the federal lockup and under the thing and then carries on. It just, it, it, there, there should have been visualizations, and you can get the last word, but that's really.
I'll go back and check our websites.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate the feedback.
Councilmember Grace Motsui.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the additional information. I have heard from residents right around the bridge at 216th that they have been concerned about settlement, that perhaps the construction has caused the earth to shift around their property. And in fact, folks have reported to me that windows don't shut quite the same way anymore. And I don't know if that's connected to the construction, but it is very close to all the work that was done on the 216th Bridge. Can you tell me a little bit more about if residents are concerned about potential impact to their homes, who they should contact or what resources are available?
The only complaint I'm aware of about settlement around 216th was from one of the residents. And it was on the west side of I-5. And for the timeframe that was provided, we were not doing, as far as 509 project, we're not doing any activities. I believe we refer them to Sound Transit, because the, the, their project is to the west of our construction activities. We also provided them information, contact information for our risk management office, where they can file a claim. And they, they have a, a claim specialist that goes out and investigates. And if, if it found to be true, then there's, of course, damages that can be paid. But typically, for any of the damages that residents believe that WashDOT caused or contractor caused, they can file a claim with Risk Management Office in Olympia, and, and it will be investigated.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I do have a question about this slide. If you can easily go to the slide where it talked, where you showed, I think it's Phase, Stage 1A, where you talked about the. where you talk about the toll. And I just just for clarity, for people who are trying to consider what's going to happen right there, at the end of 509, that this is the section that's going to be done next. Um, if you don't get off where you normally do right now, right, the biggest dead end in the state, right, right over there? If. Oh.
The other way.
This way? Okay, right here, they've got one, yeah, right there. If you don't get off right here, when it's all complete, if you don't get off right here, um, you're you're going to end up paying this toll, right? Because there's no, there's no off ramp right here anyway. Um, this right here is the only place where you're going to toll. But you might as well, it might as well just be this whole section, right? Because you can't get on or off on this section.
That's correct, yes, so so we basically told the the newly built section of 509 Expressway. Uh, the the full EIS uh basically had another interchange at 200th, but it's not part of Phase One, that's what we're building. There's a part, if if that interchange will be added in the future, then there will be a need for another toll point, and people can, you know, potentially get off earlier, but still paying the toll.
So that's that's still a conversation then, so but it's on the few you say, well, if it's in the future, I mean, that's.
It it's it's in the EIS, so it's out as a public policy, but there's no currently any funding for it.
Right. So anyway, that I think, um, thank you for that, just the clarity. This, if if you, basically, if you want to keep driving your car right here, you're going to pay a toll. But it's going to be registered, you probably have cameras or something over here, right? Okay, and then where is, just for clarity, also, if you do keep driving right here, where is the first off ramp? Is it here on 99, or do you have to go all the way to Kent Des Moines Road?
You're going to basically that collector distributor, and then you're going to have to.
Right here?
Yeah, and then you have basically like three options. You can continue continue on Southbound I-5. You can make a left turn onto that tunnel at Veron's Drive, or you can exit at S R 516.
Right here, okay, good, that was just for clarity on that, thank you. Uh, I think that was just also, public engagement, uh, starting September 4th, online open house. If people have questions about, and also can people, is that, um, also, I think people are going to be, are we're asking about the local traffic impacts when they begin building that. Is there going to be rerouting of traffic, or will people still be able to drive on Des Moines Memorial Drive, though maybe interrupted?
We're not planning any like permanent directional closures on Des Moines Memorial Drive. There could be some lane closures or maybe some night closures to do some utility work or anything along those lines, but we're not planning to have full closures of Des Moines Memorial Drive.
Okay, good, thank you very much. Any other? No, okay, that was all for me.
Just to be clear, we have no more questions about Item 5 on the consent calendar. Okay, great, appreciate it, thank you. Um, I have a couple more items here. See Jeff coming forward, so he must be next. Um, Item 5, we have the this year's second quarter financial report with our finance director, Jeff Friend.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, good evening, Deputy Mayor, Council, members of the public, Jeff Friend, Finance Director, uh, tonight, we're going to have hopefully brief update of uh the 2024 second quarter. Because it's brief, there are, the report is in the packet uh for tonight's meeting. That has uh all the details, that covers the general fund, other funds, ARPA, all of that. Tonight, we're going to focus primarily on the general fund in this presentation. Uh, we're going to talk about structural and one-time revenue and expenditures. And we'll take a look at, you know, where things are through uh June 30th and briefly touch on the budget process that is currently underway. So through June 30th, uh, in the general fund, uh, overall revenues uh were 13.2 million, and expenditures uh overall were 12.5 million, resulting in an operating income of a little over $657,000, which, you know, in beginning of the year, I would have been pretty ecstatic seeing that number. So um, it's okay to feel good about that. I think it's the first report I've had where we haven't had overall loss. Um, however, we do need to take a look at what that number consists of, uh, to see what's really going on uh with the general fund. Um, and in order to do that, we need to look at what we've been calling um one-time and structural, but I just want to clarify exactly what we mean by those terms. Uh, the Government Finance Officers Association actually uses the terms recurring and non-recurring. So recurring revenues are the portion of government's revenues that can be reasonably expected to continue year to year with some degree of predictability. So therefore, uh, items such as property tax, uh, sales tax, uh, utility tax, those kinds of things, we tend to know those are going to be here year to year. We can predict it, we can prod, you know, make projections off of historical uh amounts. So those, we consider recurring. Uh, recurring expenditures appear in the budget each year. Recurring expenditures should be those where funding is expected every year in order to maintain current or status quo service levels. So basically, you have your recurring revenue come in, the the revenue you trust is going to be there, and then you take those funds, and then you can spend it on recurring expenditures. So that could be, you know, salaries for police officers, um, you know, it could be park services uh and employees there. So it's just, those are the recurring day-to-day operation revenue and expenditures. So when we use the term structural, this is really what we're talking about. We're talking about reliably recurring transactions. And which leads to a structurally balanced budget is a budget where recurring revenues equal or exceed recurring expenditures. Uh, so therefore, when we're talking about the budget and we want to balance the budget, you know, our primary focus is, you know, the day-to-day operations, what's recurring, you know, what can we trust is going to be there? Of course, we'll have grant revenue or something that is one-time. Um, but as we think back to the the days when the city almost went bankrupt and there's a finding by the state auditors, uh, one of the part pieces of the findings was that the city at the time was relying too much on what we would call one-time or non-recurring funds. Uh, and so the course correction that was done was to keep track of what's recurring and structural versus what's one-time and non-recurring. So when we look at the operating income through June, and we look at what's structural and recurring, we see that it's a loss of uh almost $215,000. And what was part of the budget strategy for 2024 was to use ARPA funds to help plug the the budget gap. Um, so that's really what's kind of driving our operating income, is that we've had ARPA funds come in uh for one-time expenditures, and that's a one-time revenue. So it's good to feel good about the $657,000, but we need to understand really what's the underlying truth of that number. Um, which leads to the status quo without ARPA. So if we didn't have the one-time revenue and we had the current positions we have now, uh, what would that look like? So the general fund operating loss again would be about $215,000. Uh, we have two police officers that are limited term, funded with ARPA, so that is a one-time expenditure. That is $127,000, a little bit over that, maybe about 128. Uh, crisis response specialist, limited term, uh, almost $54,000. Crime analyst, limited term, about the same amount. And then the Redondo substation lease, uh, which is a little over $19,000. So all of that is underneath the line of the operating loss. Those are one-time uh non-recurring expenditures, uh, which total through June would be a loss of about $470,000 if we did not have, you know, ARPA funds covering those one-time non-recurring expenditures. So if that's through June and you're going to project that out to the end of the year, you can see that that would be uh over 900, almost a million-dollar loss on the recurring side. Um, and then also, if you consider the vacancies that we've had that helped contribute to being um under budget with personnel costs, uh, then that could, you know, make that annual amount uh closer to maybe 1.4, 1.5 million. So uh, speaking of the budget and budget gaps, um, we're gathering, we just finished the department meetings, uh, budget meetings for this cycle. So we've had the budget requests from the departments come in, and um, this, basically this weekend. But in the coming week, we are going to also, you know, we're going to pull the numbers together. So we're going to have the salary and benefits information and all the, you know, other costs and revenues pulled together. So as far as like what the budget gap is in the coming month, we'll have a concrete idea of what that number is. Um, but part of that process is we have a a baseline. So um, we had the meetings with the departments, um, nobody was, you know, silly enough to request additional uh FTEs. So it was pretty uh smooth meetings. So but we we established what are the positions the city's going to have in 2025. And so because these positions on this slide are non-recurring, and we don't have that revenue source that we can trust in 2025, these positions will not be included in that initial baseline. Okay, um, and back to uh regular reporting, general fund revenue uh through June. These are the major revenue categories, uh, so we have property tax, utility taxes, a sales tax regular. And again, um, the difference between regular and one-time sales tax is, again, that recurring nature. So the one-time sales tax is sales tax that we get from, you know, uh, construction projects in the city that are $15 million or more, which is not included on this chart, but that's what sales tax, the regular sales tax is. Um, and the same with BNO taxes, then we have franchise fees and then uh red light running. Uh, the blue column is the budget. Uh, the middle yellow column is the prior year, 2023, uh, at this time year-to-date. And then uh the green bar is the current year through June. So you can see property tax um is, you know, that 1% growth is, you know, you can see is pretty stable right up there. Uh, utility taxes are through June. Uh, they are exceeding budget and they're ahead of last year by just a little bit. Um, sales tax is more than last year on the regular portion. Uh, we'll take a look at overall combined uh sales tax on the next slide. Uh, it's less than budget, but more than last year. And then BNO taxes, they get kind of a head start, um, because there's some annual filers uh that do file once a year. So that's ahead of budget and uh prior year levels, as well as franchise fees. And red light running uh continues its slightly downward trend, uh, where usually we get about 1.2 million uh per year from red light running uh into the general fund. Uh, we're probably going to end up closer to 1.1 million uh with the current trend. So overall, sales tax, so this is sales tax, this is combined, the regular and one-time, just to show the general trend. Uh, through June, uh, the green line that, you know, ends in June is the current year of 2024. The yellow uh line is 2023, and the blue is 2022. So through June, we're just barely behind uh the total of the prior year. So June, we had a strong month, um, as well as in February. And then you can see it kind of follows the same pattern, March and April, a little bit under uh the prior year. Uh, general fund expenditures, uh, and our personnel costs are just a little over $8 million, uh, which exceeds the expenditures from last year at the same time, uh, but is slightly under uh budget. And uh supplies is about equal to the prior year, about $60,000 over budget. And services are slightly over the prior year and budget, uh, and that was a cost of almost 3.2 million. And that concludes uh my presentation.
Uh, if I could just add a couple of things on to Jeff's report. So um, he noted, um, and I think it's in the in the packet or in the the presentation that was included with the packet, we're about $1 million under budget, under our projected budget at the second, into the second quarter. Um, you know, because back in November of last year, we looked at our projections and our revenue, and and we saw we had some issues coming up, and we were running out of ARPA money. So we've been doing a lot at the staff level about, um, you know, keeping vacant positions open, not filling them. Um, you know, really looking at our professional services and those kind of supply costs and trying to keep those as low as possible. So I mean, those are budget strategies that we've implemented since November of of 2023. That's that's helped us, that's kept about $1 million off of our projected expenditures. We can't do that forever, because these are positions that are essentially vacant. We have two people or one person doing two jobs, right? And so those, they they can do it for a while with the expectation that eventually that job gets filled. And so, you know, that's that's one thing that we've been working on, but I think that is good news to see that we've, you know, we've been able to save some of that over the six-month period. Not something we can do forever, but we have done it for over six months. Um, so that is good news. Obviously, we know from Tuesday, it looks like Proposition 1 is not going to pass. So the result of that is, you know, we've been, as we've been going through this budget process, we've kind of had two tracks. One if it passes, one if it doesn't. Um, you know, the one if it doesn't is is pretty bleak, right? And so that's where we're at. We've met with the departments, we've met with the police department today. Um, you know, one of the bummer's in this is the the slide that he had up there about the one-time or the limited-term positions. When we're looking at our budget projections, those positions aren't even in the budget for next year. So when we're talking about about a budget deficit, and we're talking about, okay, well, maybe we we terminate the limited-term positions, well, that will give us zero savings, because those were already out of the budget. So um, so putting those back in, you know, very, very difficult. Um, so we have some tough decisions to make. We met with the police department today, like I said, talked about that. Um, we are preparing for the budget retreat on September 5th. Um, and so at that time, we will have a number of scenarios, so. Yeah, that's what I have, so any questions?
I also forgot to mention the schedule on page 28 in the packet uh is also incorrect, and we can provide a updated corrected page uh tomorrow. There's a copy and paste issue, and there's one uh column in that schedule that wasn't updated, so we'll we'll get that fixed.
Okay, any questions, Councilmember Harris.
Um, so when you say non-recurring and recurring, is this, that, i- is this like, is there some fundamental difference between, you know, that and one-time, or is it just potato, potato? I'm just.
Um, I would say it's potato, potato.
Okay, but that's the term of art we're going with, because that's.
I think um, the reason I we I include it in the presentation is just to provide clarity, um, in case people have heard one-time structural and they don't actually, you know, maybe they don't understand what that is. But I thought recurring and non-recurring in the presentation helped clarify that.
Okay, uh, I'm going to evolve and I'm going to use that, um, thank you. Um, and also on the term of art, um, when you say cycle, you're talking a two-year cycle now, right? Because we're biennial.
Right, so we're, yeah, we have a biennial.
Okay, so departments are going to be presenting uh proposals for staffing for two years, right? Based on or.
Uh, correct, but there's also a review period next year uh to talk about 2026, uh, which the state mandates, and if, you know, they have staffing requests at that point, then they can make a request.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, is it, how much flexibility there is or or, you know, yeah, in terms of planning. And the uh o- only other thing which I can take offline is just that, um, unfortunately, it wasn't in your wonderful presentation, but you had a couple of summaries of the enterprise funds, which is really great. But um, you, they talk about capital outlay, well, it makes it look like we're just like losing a fortune. And um, and there's like a, you know, an almost $8 million capital outlay for the Marina Fund and the swim. And I'm just, I'm assuming we haven't spent that while I wasn't. Anyway, the point I'm trying to get at is, is there some presentation here that can, um, yeah, this is, this is the one thing I where I, it would be better to have just like what the actual fund balance is. And um, but this is something we've been talking about. Uh, it just looks like holy mackerel, we, you know, we're like, we lost 567% and I'm just.
Right, the budget, like, speaking of the Marina, the budget anticipated we'd be doing dock replacement this year, and then that's actually going to happen next year, so we can maybe put a footnote on there to explain. So, we can maybe put a footnote on there to explain that that's why that number is...
Yeah, I'm not trying to add to that. I know you, you just work, you know, constantly, but I'm just saying a layperson looks at it and they just go, whoa, okay, that's it.
Councilmember Oxer, I can't see you. Do you have your hand up? No? Okay. No other questions? All right, thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff. Our final report tonight is our Assistant City Manager, A.J. Johnson-Newton, to talk about our City Manager Recruitment Update.
Good evening, Council, members of the community staff. My name is A.J. Johnson-Newton and I am the Assistant City Manager and I am here to talk about the City Manager Selection Process. So, last week, I left the council and the community with a bit of a cliffhanger, but I promised I'd be back, so here I am. Next slide, please. So, per my usual, I like to just start off with a recap for anyone that's just starting to follow along. So, these are all of the steps that the council has taken to get us to this point. You'll note that the item at the bottom in red is where we are today. The council selected four candidates to move forward to the onsite interview process and they have all indicated that they will be able to attend. So, we have four candidates, the council will be reviewing. Next slide, please. So, before I hop into this, I do want to be a little bit of a kill buzz or buzzkill, excuse me. We will not be releasing the finalist names until the week of August 19th. And the reason for that is we wanna allow the candidates time to talk to their current employers, to let them know that they're gonna be participating in the, in the interviews. And so, that's just a courtesy you would wanna extend to them. And so, on the 19th, we will be releasing the names to the public along with bios, which will be plenty of time for the public to review the bios and the information. So, if you were hoping I was gonna give the names tonight, I'm sorry, but it is coming soon. So, a little bit about this slide is that I wanted to just sort of highlight when we build these processes out, what are our Bean City staff, our perspective is, our goals and our desired incomes. So, basically, the point of the process is, it's threefold for us. So, one, we want every candidate to leave the city of Des Moines regardless if they get the job or not, feeling like, man, I really love that place. You know, it's very important to us to make that impression on the candidates. And so, and I think we've, at least the feedback we've received in other recruitments that we have conducted, we've been successful for that and we continue, plan to continue to do that. The other piece of the process is that we wanna be efficient, effective, make sure that our process is following legal requirements and it's organized, right? I think as you guys all know, if you've participated in any process, just feeling like things are organized, you feel like your time's respected and that enhances the candidate's experience. And then third, and, and, and very important, is we wanna be able to provide the council with feedback from different stakeholders and insights from the interview to help them make a well-informed decision. So, you wanna build a process where they're gonna get lots of inputs so that when they sit down and start to deliberate who they're gonna select, they feel like they have enough information to make a good decision. The other thing I would say about this, and I'm not saying this is the, the emotion on the council, but a lot of times with hiring authorities, there's a little bit of angst going through the interview process and you're like, ah, I gotta get it right. So, I would just remind not only the council, but the community and the public that this is just a part of the comprehensive hiring process. So, the council has had, they've received supplemental written materials from the candidates. They've gotten a 30-minute like online self-interview. There will be background checks, there'll be reference checks. So, this is an important piece, but it's not the only piece. So, next slide, please. Okay, so day one. So, Tuesday, August 27th is the big day. So, during the day, we'll have the candidates come onsite. They'll be provided a city tour, they'll participate in two different onsite panel interviews and then they'll also participate in a staff meet and greet. Later that evening, the city will be hosting a community meet and greet for the Citizens' Advisory Committee and the general public. At that meet and greet, each candidate will have about 10 minutes to introduce themselves to the community and talk about the opportunities and challenges they see for Des Moines and explain how they plan to leverage those opportunities and tackle the challenges. After each of the candidate has been given their 10 minutes, we keep calling it quadrants, but they will go to a designated area and then they will be available for the public to ask any questions one-on-one. So, just a couple additional notes about that, about day one. So, the two onsite panels will consist of the leadership panel and then a community panel of which will be made up of members that the council selected. The staff meet and greet, we have a survey that'll be going out to our staff, hopefully tomorrow, asking them for feedback about things that are important to them and the next candidate. And so, they will get an opportunity also to interact with the candidates and complete comment cards that will be provided to the council later on. In addition, also with the meet and greet, you'll notice that that last line says that the community will be encouraged to complete comment cards and those will also be provided to the council. So, the goal really on Tuesday is to leverage all of the stakeholders and gather as much feedback as we can for the council to consider as part of their decision. Next slide, please. Okay. So, this is just a little shameless plug, but, you know, one of the things that I really enjoy about working at the city is I sent an email to these people and I said, hey, I need your help. I didn't say what for, I just said, hey, I need your help. Are you available on August 27th? And I just wanted to highlight the fact, it's really nice to basically get email responses like, yes, what do you need? And so, this will be our core team along with some other support staff. You know, you'll, you know, sort of representative of a variety of positions at the city. And just to show how we're wearing different hats, our harbor master is also gonna be our driver on the city tour. So, they're not picky about how they assist, but again, I just want the community to know what type of staff you have at, at City Hall. Okay, so enough of the plug. Next slide, please. Okay, so day two, the candidates will return for an executive session where they will interview with the council. There's about an hour planned for each interview with some time for the council to debrief. And then on Thursday, the 29th, council will be provided with all of the comment cards, the evaluation sheets, all of the information we collected for them to start to review and figure out who they're interested in as their final selection. Next slide, please. So, just a little bit of, you know, if you indulge a little HR nerd out here a little bit, I wanted to talk about how the interviews are structured. So, at the city, we use a structured interview process, which is just a really simple way to say that basically all of the candidates will go through the same process, they'll be allotted the same amount of time, they'll be asked the same questions and they'll be evaluated against the same criteria. And one of the questions that comes up sometimes from hiring authorities is, well, there may be something that I'm interested in particular about one candidate. And that's okay. You can ask those questions, you just need to make sure that if you're gonna go what we like to say off-script, that the question is related to the job requirements. So, one thing I would say to the council is if there are things that you are starting to think about specific to the candidates, it would be really nice if you could forward those questions to us. And either we'll try to make a question that maybe would apply to all of the candidates, but you'd be able to glean the information you need, or we'll just acknowledge it as a specific question for that specific candidate. So, I just wanted to say that. And then basically during that process, so the candidate will be asked all the same questions, usually it's round robin style, which is just another way of saying each person's gonna take a turn. And the people that'll be on the panel will be writing down the interview responses from the candidate and then evaluating the candidate based on their responses. One thing that Councilmember Harris had mentioned early in the process is he had wanted to know how we were going to address maybe people that were unfamiliar with participating on the panel and, in, in that capacity. And so, we do have what we call interview 101, so people that will be participating on the panel will get some training. And so, then they will be a professional interview from here on out. Next slide, please. Okay, so my first question really for the council and probably my last one at this point is I had sent out an email asking if the council wanted to have the candidates complete and share their first-year game plan during their scheduled interview time. And so, I did need some direction on that because if you are going to want them to provide that during your interview time, we need to give, allow them time to prepare. So, I'll just remind you, I didn't share the form because I'm not sure if it's proprietary for SGR, but you guys did receive it in email. But basically, it's like a 10-minute presentation, PowerPoint presentation. And there's some specific questions that they would answer, but basically, how do you plan to spend your first year? So, I just need to know if the council would like to include that. My only consideration really for you guys is that it is about 10 minutes. So, it would, you know, if we have about 50 minutes, 55 minutes, 10 minutes of it, you already know is gonna go to this first-year game plan. So, it will take a chunk of your time in terms of being able to ask other questions beyond what's included in the first-year game plan.
Any questions before you're gonna ask us for a head nod?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Harris.
I have no strong feelings. I just wanted to point out the finger graphic, which really...
The pointer finger.
Yeah. I, I'm just, I, I have no strong feelings except to say that a first-year game plan, I'm, I would, I don't know if one year, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's a good idea. I just, it, it's, it would be an odd thing, you know, because I don't know if they're gonna learn enough about the situation to, but, you know, anyway, that's all. Yeah, love the graphic. That's...
Any other comments or questions before we ask for a head nod? Councilmember Grace Matsui.
So, I'm looking over the, some of the instructions to sort of refresh my memory about what is entailed in the assignment. And I'm always conscious of, if you assign a candidate homework, then I hope it's gonna be substantial in some way because otherwise you're asking them to do free work for you that you don't care about or talk about. So, I'm kind of inclined to either say, we want them to give a presentation if we're gonna ask them to do it. And if we're not, then this is a writing exercise that we've just assigned that we'll look at individually. And I don't know if folks feel like that would be helpful since we've already seen quite a bit of their writing at this point in time. So, that's what I'm wrestling with. If we do have them do this free volunteer work for us, I hope that we talk about it. And if we are not gonna talk about it, I hope we can strike it.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
I'm, I'm kind of reflecting on what my colleagues have said a little bit, so I'm gonna bounce off of, off of y'all. You know, I, I think making a public presentation is, is a big piece of their job, so I would like to see that. And, and I do think that there should be a little bit of substance to it. But one year is an awful lot of time to, to have that game plan out there for somebody that's not even on the job yet. And as Councilmember Harris pointed out, can they really get educated enough to do that? So, I would, I would think maybe a, a three to six month at the most timeframe makes more sense to me and a presentation of, you know, what it is that they think they need to learn. And hopefully, they'll get into that as they're saying what their, you know, game plan or whatever you wanna call it for the timeframe that we define. And, and I really think it's probably three months in my mind, but I'm open depending upon what the, what the rest of my colleagues wanna hear. So, yes, the public presentation, I think we should use it and discuss it. Question to me is, how long are we really asking them to give us this plan for? So, that's my thoughts.
Can I just make one clarification, just based off of what you said? So, it's not intended to be a part of the public presentation? This would be, just, just for clarification, this would be a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation that they would provide to the council during your interview with them, just for clarification.
Right, but I, but it's still, it's a public speaking opportunity even to a limited audience and I think that's a big piece of the job and we need to be able to evaluate that better than we did with the videos that we saw. So...
I, I, my comment, and I already responded to you, but I think my favorite answer to that is the first-year game plan is to develop a game plan. And I, I feel like a little bit along the lines of what Councilmember Grace Matsui said, whatever they might come up with, it might just be talking, but without really being saturated with the staff and the council and the community, I think it would be a little bit of futility for them to come up with a game plan that we might even recognize, oh, they, obviously, they don't understand X, Y, and Z, or they wouldn't have said that. And, and the other thing, there's a hint there that says they're gonna come with a plan for, for us, whereas what we appreciate in a council manager city is that the council is directive to the, the game plan. Really, the game plan for the community should come from us. And, and I appreciate, we are hiring somebody with gifts and talents, abilities, sharp experience, so they're gonna bring that to the table. But I, I'm a little bit leery about indicating to them that they, they're going to be responsible for that. And so, we do want them to have something in mind, but, and bring things to the table, obviously. So, that's my input on the first-year game plan. Councilmember Harris.
Okay, I do have an opinion now. I don't wanna take any of that precious 50 minutes for them to do a thing. I wanna have all of that time, it'll be far too short. That's just my opinion.
Any other thoughts? So, you're looking, we're looking for a head nod. If there's no other comments, do we, do we want them to come with a PowerPoint first-year game plan? Raise your hand if you say yes. Nice consensus. There we go. Okay.
All right, well, thank you. All right, next slide. So, council's next steps are also known as your to-do list. Some of you may have already done this, but just as a nudge, if you haven't, please submit your selections for the community panel to me. Tomorrow, you guys will get a list of interview questions. We would ask that you would highlight your preferred questions. There'll be a due date on there. I'll, I'll give you guys some time because we, we have, we have a bit of a runway right now. And then I'll also, we'll provide the agenda for you guys for August 27th and 28th so you have an idea of what's happening when. So, next slide, please.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I'm, we've talked about this a little before. I'm still a little unclear of the community panel and what, how many suggestions we should make and how are they going to be interacted? So, I, I'm, can we get a little more clarity on that?
Yeah, that's fine. So, no. So, I asked the council to submit five to seven names of community members that they would like to see on the panel in order of their preference. And so, the idea would be, or at least our recommendation is that you would cap the panel members at seven on the, on the panel. So, basically, if there were duplicate names, for example, so just for my example, let's say the mayor and Councilmember Harris submitted the same name as their number one choice, I would select the mayor's number one choice and then I would take Councilmember Harris's second choice on down. If there's, if your name, your first pick is not duplicated across the rest of the council members, then I'll just take your first choice. So, that was just to give the ability for me to just make sure that there was no crossover in names and not having to come back and ask the council to sort of recut the list. So, the end, the end game is that every council member will have one selection on the panel.
Any other thoughts or questions about that? Or about the presentation? Councilmember Harris.
I guess I could ask this offline, but I mean, does the order of interviews matter in your experience?
No, not when there's multiple panels. The one thing I will say less about the order but, of the interviews, but more about the order of the day is that, you know, for the candidates, that first day is gonna be a whirlwind. So, I do think there's some advantage to the fact that we basically sort of front-loaded the staff panel, the staff meet and greets, the panel interviews, the community meet and greet, and then they won't meet again for an interview until the evening. So, you guys can get the best version of the candidate because it, it's gonna, it's a lot. It just, even the people that are interviewing... It just, even the people that are interviewing, if they haven't interviewed before, for whatever reason, interviews can be a little bit draining. And so, you know, for the candidates, and obviously, it'll be part of, part of the job, but, you know, having to be on, so to speak, all day, that may be the only sort of advantage to the schedule, but not in terms of how you interview.
I was, I think I was unclear. There's sort of this last person in the room syndrome, I've noticed, is that, in other words, does the fourth person that we look at in executive session, do they have some kind of intrinsic advantage over the first person?
It really depends on the panel, but that'll be what we're talking about with the panel, right? Because the idea is that one, you're coming, or whomever's coming into the room, or each time that the new candidate comes in, would a blank slate. And, you know, speaking of that, Councilmember Harris, one thing that I would recommend to the council is that if you are planning on attending the community meet-and-greet, that you guys come in as observers. It's basically sort of your, your opportunity to watch them work without any, without any input. So I would just recommend that on Tuesday, you just, you guys come in as observers, and that way, when you show up on Wednesday, you won't, you know, other than just sort of what you've watched them sort of work the room, you won't come into with any preconceived notions, because you've had some sort of interaction with the candidates prior, other than maybe an introduction. You're certainly welcome to do more, but I think it would yield you better results in that on Wednesday. Try to come in more with a blank, a blank...
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
I just wanted to dovetail onto that question a little bit that you posed, Councilmember Harris, because I think it's a great question, because we do have biases that come into our judgment, and sometimes, the first person you meet leaves that great impression, and sometimes, the last person you meet leaves that great impression. And you just have to recognize that that could be a form of bias, that you're like, were they really as great as number one, or can I no longer remember number one? And if you say to yourself, well, the thing that's shiny in front of me is better, then you're engaging in a form of bias, which is really an error in your judgment, right? So it's up to you, as a panelist, to kind of go, okay, how, what is influencing me that this person is giving me the best impression or the worst impression? Is it the quality of their answer, their presentation, the way they hold themselves, or is it, I'm tired and I want this to be over? Yes.
Part of what we'll be handing out to the panel members, not necessarily leadership staff, because they've all attended Interview 101 training, where we talk about exactly that, is sort of a list of things to be self-aware about with their biases, like which you alluded to, you know, if someone comes in and they're completely outgoing, and you relate to that, so you're not really paying attention to the things they're saying, you're just paying attention to how they make you feel. So we'll talk about, I mean, briefly, I do understand, you know, we don't have a lot of time to train the panel, but we will address exactly what you just described, to try to help the panel be more non-biased, and sort of check their stuff at the door, and really just focus and hone in on the candidate and what they're hearing.
Okay. It looks like there are no other questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, AJ. And that concludes the city manager report. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the consent agenda, so would the city clerk please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, settlement agreement, Sandberg versus Des Moines. Item four, temporary right-of-way easement, College Way. Item five, inter-agency agreement, GCB 3807 between Washtot and City of Des Moines. Item six, collective bargaining agreement, Police Support Guild. And that concludes the consent agenda. Mayor?
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve the consent calendar as read. Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll give that to Councilmember Mahoney this time. Thank you. Is there an item that the council member wishes to pull? Okay, great. All in favor, raise your hand. Seven, zero. Fantastic. Next up is new agenda items for consideration. So this is a time for the purpose of proposing new business items for discussion on a future agenda that also have not previously been before the council. This is not a time for council action or questions about old business. Council members can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. Do any council members wish to have new business they would like to propose? Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. This is something that I've talked about with a couple of my colleagues, going back a month ago, but because of the study session and shortage of time. The Port of Seattle has a four-to-one tree replacement requirement as part of their land stewardship partnership, which we got a presentation on a couple of months ago now, and I would propose that this be remanded to the environment committee to talk about putting forth a similar proposal to revise the Des Moines Municipal Code appropriately.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the council member? So all in favor of remanding this issue to the environment committee?
I think you just need a consensus of three to remand it to the committee.
Yep.
Okay. Do I have three head nods? One, two, three, four. Okay, it's like it got it. And, you know, need to ask permission of the chair.
Yeah, well, you know, I know a guy, so, thank you, Tevri.
Thank you. All right. That, that's it for new business. So moving on to council member reports, and we'll begin with Councilmember Harris.
So I attended four National Night Out events, and it was pretty thrilling, because, you know, you kind of go to different ones every year, and there were many younger communities, like I met the public commenter today. It's always really great when somebody new shows up to get involved in the city. And on that note, I did put out a call for names to be on that community panel. Thank you to everyone who asked. I will just say, I was somewhat biased to try to bring some younger people into the game. We have a number of people who engage with the city all the time, and I'm trying really to get that next generation on board, but everyone who submitted their name, thank you. I am, speaking of which, part of the King County Flood District Advisory Committee, and I just want to put it on the council's or the public's radar, that they are about to go over their own fiscal cliff of something like $900 million. And they will be, they, we will be considering how to plug that, and because it is a special purpose district, it will resolve itself somewhere on your taxes sometime soon, and I'll just, parenthetically, it comes down to the fact that the county was lovely enough to not raise taxes by that 1% allowable for many, many years, and when you do that incremental thing, you put it off, it sounds great, and then eventually, the chickens come home to roost. So, council, I will be passing on a letter from Tim Robinson, the owner of Robinson Newspapers. They publish the Des Moines News, publish the Des Moines News, and have an inventory of 100 years of local newspapers. And they, he has acquiesced to allow somebody to scan these and make them available to the public. And I would like the council to consider for next year, finding out if there are some of those lovely county and state grants to have us scan them and make them available to the public. The, the local history of that, every couple of week newspaper, it's just glorious. And let's see here, oh, just, I'm probably running out of time, and I just wanted to point out, there was a meeting of state electors and the Port of Seattle last week regarding the port package updates, and no firm commitments, but basically, they are head nodding that the program will be expanded to at least some opportunity to the entire community, not just this narrow group that they initially considered. And before the thing goes out, the University of McGill in Montreal has just completed their own ultrafine particle study using the same methodology as the University of Washington, and this is the most conclusive evidence to date as to the health impacts, excess deaths directly related to ultrafines, and it comes at a good time as we enter the discussions on the Sustainable Airport Master Plan. And that's it.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, Tim, I just wanted to thank you for the presentation on the financials today. I share your disappointment that the levy appears to be failing. I think we understand the financial situation the city is in, and some don't. Fact is, costs have gone up nearly 20%, and revenue's not even close. One of the issues will be is if, if our, if our residents pass on it in November, you can see, as the presentation allowed today, that this council and the staff will have to make serious cuts. There's an expectation of services, and people want more than they, more than they want to pay for, and it's going to be a tough, tough decisions that are going to be made. It'll be 2025 that a lot of people realize what they've done to themselves, and it's I think that I, as an educator of the community, need to do a better job of explaining the situation, and I'm committed to doing that in the next few months. But I would ask the public, I understand tax fatigue, because you've been fatigued. I've also understood that your grocery bill that was 200 two years ago is 400, and everything costs more. But I have to ask you, what is the price of public safety to secure and ensure that your families are safe? We're facing rising crime. We've got policy that's changed crime. We've seen it, we're seeing it in our community more and more. And without the ability to fight it, we could be in a much more desperate situation. That's going to affect our businesses, that's going to affect your property values and those kind of things. And I ask the community, what is the cost of that versus the cost of a few hundred dollars extra every year? I also ask to listen to voices like you saw in the presentation today that are factual and not speculative, and who understand what the issue is. We have an opportunity in November to save ourselves. I hope the residents choose to do so. Thank you.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Well, thank you. Like Councilmember Harris and others, I attended several of the National Night Out. In fact, saw someone come in, Mr. Davis, that I met on one of those nights out, and he told me he was going to see me on Thursday, and he was right. It was wonderful, like you said, as well, to see so many young families. It was quite a mix of folks, but I was generally surprised by how many toddlers, kids that were running around. In some cases, felt like they outnumbered the adults. So it was, which is always a problem, I feel, in my personal opinion. But I do feel like it was eye-opening for me to meet some of the folks who are out there. I had a family who moved to Des Moines from Yakima back in 2000, I think they said 19, so relatively new family, and they said, can you do something about the pedestrian safety on 8th Avenue? And so I thought that was a really great concern, and it's something that I hear echoed from young families, families with young kids all over the city. So thank you to the folks who went out of their way to bring their community together and host a party where they could get to know their neighbors, do some organizing. Perhaps we'll get some more community watch, neighborhood watch volunteers out of this, and it's just a great way for us to look out for each other, and a good community is known for doing something like that. I wanted to highlight that we have an event, so hopefully, Jean wasn't going to say something about this, but I'll take care of it. There's a pop-up arts exhibition coming up at a new venue and organization that's come up here in Des Moines, and I'm going to read from something to make sure that I got all the details right. So Inkfish Gallery is going to be posting a, hosting a free pop-up art exhibit this Saturday at their location at 5:00 p.m. We also got some community emails announcing it to make sure that folks knew about this happening. It's going to be downtown in the Marina District, and it's a curated show with several artists in our areas of various mediums, and including folks that you probably have heard of, like Earl Harper of Harper Studios and others. You can go visit them at the Glass Studio of George C. Scott at 222-20, 7th Avenue South, this Saturday, starting at 5:00 p.m. Thank you very much.
I'm writing notes here. Thank you. Councilmember Nutting.
No remarks, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You did steal my thunder, but that's fine. That's fine. I appreciate the, the report, so. I also did attend the National Night Out, and I, too, was impressed by the number of kids that we saw out there, and the number of young parents, working families. And, you know, they certainly have, have a set of needs that they have in this community, and a sense of direction of where they would like to see us go, because they are our future. And I appreciate Councilmember Mahoney's suggestions that, you know, we need to ask. We need to, and I would like to, particularly now, as we come up on, you know, having to make these, you know, decisions with regard to the budget, is that we did get an answer to a question that we put forward on Tuesday, and, but it's, it's a question, we got a, we got a yes or a no. But I think it's much more in-depth to that, than that, you know? Why did people say no? Why were people saying yes? And I think that as we, it would behoove us, and I know we've got a full agenda here and stuff, I mean, that last week in August is going to be a killer, as far as, you know, the amount of work that we've got to do, but I think it's incumbent upon us to ask and listen to what the public says. We, we have our perspective up here, but there's also the question of what does the public want? And I would hope that, you know, as we go about this, that we do put some thought into, yeah, what, tell us what you want, because, you know, ultimately, whatever we're doing, it's your, it's your city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Seth Steinmetz.
Well, I mean, it'll shock you, but I'm going to start with National Night Out, like everybody else up here. I think, you know, it's, it's really a great community event, small community, small C on that. I had the pleasure of writing with Assistant Chief Penny, who I did not know very well, and got to know a little bit, and, you know, really a good guy. Been, been with the City of Des Moines, I think, 25 years. I mean, a long, his whole career pretty much has been here, and, you know, he's, he's dedicated to the community. I agree, it was great to see a lot of younger families with kids running around. You know, it, it seems that we're starting to get some of that in some of the older, more tired neighborhoods that are starting to turn over, and, and the families are moving in, and I think that's absolutely wonderful. I'm glad, I'm glad we did that. To sort of dovetail on what Councilmember Oxiger just said, you know, we got to consider what those family want, what those families want and need from their community. I know one of the things that attracted me when I moved here with two, you know... with two, you know, very young boys, about 25, yeah, I think we're at 25 years ago, was we had a really great parks and rec department and a lot of activities. You know, my boys first organized baseball games, we were T-ball, you know, down over here. And they, they, we did after-school care in the community. There was Camp Chaos during the summer. You know, my oldest son, that was the first job he ever had. He had come up through Camp Chaos, really enjoyed it. And that was the first organized job that, that he ever had. And, and those are great things. And if we can figure out if, if that's what the community wants, and there's another big advantage to those kinds of events is that everybody in the community comes to those. Your kids interact with your kids that interact with your kids that interact with your kids, and it just breaks down barriers all, all the way across. It, it's really a wonderful thing if we can do that. You know, but that kind of leads me to if, if. We have some big, big questions coming. The levy is not going to pass in August. And so, you know, strap on your seat belts. It's going to be a really rough ride. We're going to put out a, a budget that will hopefully educate people of what it looks like if we're trying to, if we don't have the money to fund the police force, and we have to make all of the cuts that we need to make from, you know, from the general fund at large. And, boy, it, I, I hope we hear a lot of feedback on that. We do, we want the public to say, what do you want? Where do you think we can cut? Where do you think we can increase our revenue? One of the things that's become really clear in this whole process is that we just don't have good structural revenue streams that will allow us to grow. They're fairly static. And we need to figure out, how do we increase those streams? But that's a long-term problem or conversation. And we've got some short-term things that we need to solve right now. So, you know, we've heard you, and we will do our best to then write a budget around that. One last thing is the Cambodian Cultural Celebration is this Saturday at Saltwater State Park. It's been a wonderful event every year. I'd invite everybody to attend. Thank you.
Did you have something?
I'm, I'm sorry. I forgot something.
That's okay. Go ahead. You didn't get beat, so.
I hope, I hope I'm not stepping on your toes or anything. But August 24th is the Poverty Bay Blues and Brewers put on by our Rotary. I don't believe we meet before then, so.
We don't?
Please remember the poverty, it's a, it's a great event. And I believe that several of us on the dais will be helping, helping out with that event. But it raises money for local charities and primarily the Music for Life program and stuff. So tickets are on sale and with the, at the Des Moines Norbity Park Rotary website. So, sorry to.
You can pay me later. So, thank you. It's been a really busy month, and we, this is a happening place. I mean, this is not, I mean, you read through this, this is not a sleepy little town. People who want to have something to do, you can have something to do almost every single night. It's, it's very cool in a community our size. We've been featured on local television, really with regional coverage. We hosted a state Little League tournament. We were visited by dignitaries from China. We hosted regional conversations about climate resilience and homelessness. We facilitated a youth summit. Thank you, Community Services Officer Tanya Seaberry. She's not here tonight, but she hosted that up at Why Not You Academy. Great experience. Our town has celebrated, feasted, and listened to amazing music. And like now, our community music, really, the beach park on Wednesdays, very often down at the quarter deck, and we've had some people doing music down at the boardwalk. So that's incredible, beachfront music in Des Moines. Your council has visited with and listened to myriad citizens, especially in the last four weeks or so, seeking input. And I'm very thankful for the active council that we've got. And yes, I did do a National Night Out, too. So, and very fun, great experience. I didn't receive one complaint. They're in my, I'm sure they're in my email, but I didn't in-person receive any complaints. And that, but such a pleasant experience. I love our community members. But this month, most notable, you've already heard, very well spoken from several of my colleagues, it's going to be a tough listen or a tough hear, hearing in the next, in the coming weeks. And we're going to feel it as we listen at City Hall, the council, and the community. And so feel free, though, to continue to respond. Write to us, call us, set up appointments with us. There's an in-person opportunity coming up this Saturday. I'm hosting a chat with the mayor at the Marina Mercantile at 11:00 AM on Saturday. So I would love to hear from you. Love to see you. Come and visit with me. Thank you to those who come out to the meetings and those who watch us online. I appreciate that engagement and the interest and the inspiration. So appreciate you all. This concludes our meeting for this evening. The next meeting date will be September 5th, 2024. It will be a city council study session. Please remember to pick up after yourself on your way out. And I'm going to pass it to council member Harris if you'd like to make the motion.
Sure thing. Yeah, I make a motion to adjourn this council meeting.
Do I have a second? Council member Grace Matsui. I'll give that to you. She raised her hand first. All in favor? Looks like it's unanimous. Thank you.